... tonight's committee meeting. Mr. Otto?
We'll call to order the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Please call the roll.
Ms. Shanawet?
Present.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Huth?
Here.
Ms. Pat?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Whelan?
Here.
Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterfield.
Okay, next we have additions to the agenda in the staff report. I've talked with Mr. Holtz, and he's requested that we remove item six from the agenda. Because we're not quite ready to act on this yet. Objection, we'll go ahead and do that. Are there any other additions or corrections? Attorney staff. Next we have minutes of the previous meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion a second. Is there any discussion, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. I have one correction on the bottom of page two. There, the ordinance approving and authorizing an execution agreement with the state of Illinois Department of Transportation. It reflects that the motion was made but not that it was seconded and passed, so we could accept a friendly amendment to say, "Motion seconded by Ms. Wyman and carried by voice vote."
Is there any objection to the motioner and the seconder to that amendment? No objection, that becomes part of the main motion. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next we come to public input. Anybody who'd like to address the council for a period up to five minutes? We have these yellow slips of paper in the back. If you fill one of those out and give them to me while you'll have the opportunity now to address the council. First we have Carl Hill from the Urbana Business Association, supporting funding by the city of Urbana.
Good evening to everyone. Do want to, before I forget to, thank our chief administrative officer and our city attorney. They did dry out, although it did seem to affect their hairdos, but that's okay. We really appreciate their help and support. All of you, want to thank you for your support, for Sweet Corn, and of course, all the efforts at UBA. You've seen the credentials, many of you, most of you have met our new executive officer. I'd like to encourage you to support UBA and him the best you can. We have a amendment, or excuse me, a, I forget what the name is. We had something before you to request funds, and we are trying, as from UBA's side, us as volunteers, a lot of people, of course, putting in their time and effort to make Urbana a more dynamic place in which to live, work, and do business. We're trying to do what we can to bring on really good people, hoping that you would show your support as the city and the council for the work that he is going to be doing and that we will be doing as directors and volunteers for that organization. We have a lot of things on the agenda. We've been able to accomplish quite a bit regarding Build Urbana. We have close to 100, if not 100, building permits so far this year already. And the other thing, I didn't know if I needed two slips tonight to show what I was here representing, but South Ridge Five is on the agenda tonight for approval, and I want to let you know that I'll be here to answer any questions you might have for it. It's been a long time coming. It seems like every time it rained this spring and summer that we were set back another three or four days, so now a couple months late, we are getting things rolling. If you can approve the plat, we'll be in the next day after that plat is recorded to get building permits and start building out there. Have a lot of anxious people. Have talked with the power company, by the way. The meeting that we had with them several weeks ago seems to have been very profitable, helpful. They have responded in a lot of ways to the concerns which we did have as builders, developers. There are still a couple builders that are wondering where the power company is, but I talked with Don Waddell today, and he has said that they are making every effort they can to see that the problems that we did have are ironed out, find ways to resolve them. So it's possible that we might be able to pursue a path, not necessarily to the ICC, but to see with a little bit of time how they are responding and if they are doing it satisfactorily. And if there is a vehicle whereby we can discuss that with you as builders and developers, if we can be of any help in that way, we'd like to be able to do that. If there's any questions then following, I'd be glad to answer those questions.
Questions for Mr. Hill. Ms. Wyman?
Just a comment, wanted to congratulate you on the Sweet Corn Festival. It was absolutely amazing, and I think the best Sweet Corn Festival I've been to. And just packed with people but didn't feel too crowded. I think you spread it out very well, and of course, wonderful entertainment as well.
I'll pass that on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Danielle Shanawet.
Sorry, Ms. Shanawet, I'm blanking out, sorry.
Carl, I just want to thank you and the UBA for the Sweet Corn Festival, underline what Ms. Wyman has said. The Arts Boulevard piece was a real success. I talked to all the vendors of the arts, and they sold a lot. They also got a lot of comments. It was really a unique kind of piece to the whole Sweet Corn Festival. I also had the opportunity to be downtown Saturday night and probably saw Main Street filled with more bodies than I've ever seen before in my life. Pretty much about a block and a half solid of human beings. At one point, listening to the Marshall Tucker Band, and just good spirits all around. It was nice to see our businesses open in the evening, and you know, downtown Urbana was really hopping place on Saturday night. So just wanted to thank you and applaud the UBA for, you know, really putting together a fantastic event this weekend.
And again, I will pass that on. All I did was sell tickets in a few years. I'll let them know, and it is a lot of fun. Just so you do know, and anyone listening might know, next year we're going to have most, if not all, of the food vendors down by the band, so that Saturday night, when Saturday night comes, it'll be fairly easy to have the pizza, the barbecue, or whatever, and then have your drinks and get into the band or be close by. So each year, we're adding a little bit more and getting it a little more organized, make it a little more fun. It seems like you always learn something every year. No matter how much you do improve, there's always more room for improvement, and we'll keep, of course, heading in that direction. And again, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Hill. Are there any other questions for Mr. Hill?
All right. Thank you very much. All right. There's no further public input. Next we have the hearing on Illinois Power, I'm sorry, the resolution concerning Illinois Power, Resolution Number 2003-08-020R, Resolution authorizing the chief administrative officer to file or join in an informal complaint with the Illinois Commerce Commission concerning Illinois Power's companies, customer service, and reliability. Is that a good memo? Do we have a good, all right, title? Speak to that.
As I think Carl was referring to, there was a public hearing some weeks ago, actually it was two months ago today, June 25th, that we had a joint hearing in the Champaign City Council chambers and heard some of the concerns almost uniformly from businesses about reliability and about customer responsiveness for particularly builders in getting the power to new buildings, new homes, and the sensitivity of some of the businesses in our area, particularly the high-tech businesses where even an outage of a fraction of a second can be very costly to them with high-tech equipment. It's not like most of us homeowners where if the power goes out for a couple of hours, why, you know, the food's still going to be good in the refrigerator when the power comes on. A lot of these businesses are very sensitive to the glitches in the power system and have business deadlines that they have to meet which require using their equipment and the power it takes to run them. So we did hear quite a number of complaints about the reliability of the existing system and the responsiveness of Illinois Power to be able to come in and install the utility hookups when they're needed. And a lot of businessmen were talking about the system as an Illinois Power and their lack of responsiveness and lack of capability to be able to respond in a timely fashion, particularly in new buildings. And so this is a follow-up, and I'm going to turn it over to Trish Crowley from Champaign, and she's in the legal department. I think most of you know her, and she's going to give us an update. She's been bird-dogging this on behalf of the two cities. And Trish, welcome to our council chambers and look forward to your update.
Thank you. The cities of Champaign and Urbana have been working very closely together on this issue in order to be able to respond to concerns that have been raised by the economic development community, which is a community of both Champaign businesses and Urbana businesses and county businesses too as well. And in the course of trying to address the concerns of the community, we held a joint hearing, and as the mayor said, there were many business members, many community stakeholders who came to that hearing and set out their concerns. I think one of the things that was immediately apparent is that national changes in the power business have affected and have had their impact on our local power company, Illinois Power Company, and how it's organized, how it operates. There have been deregulation that has started out at the federal level. There have been mergers and acquisitions that have changed a local company into a subsidiary of a national company, and all of these things we can see having their impact on the service that we receive in the Champaign-Urbana community. Of the problems that were identified at the hearing, I think the mayor has set out, want to set them out pretty clearly. One of them is basically how to get service from Illinois Power. If you call up the power company and you have a new house that needs to have gas and electric service, one of the processes for getting that power, and the home builders in particular, expressed extreme frustration at dealing with the power company in order to have service in a timely way, because every day that they can't get their power to a new construction may be a day that impacts their building schedule and things of that nature. We also had construction, members of the construction community that weren't necessarily calling up for new power service but have asked Illinois Power to relocate facilities in order to get along, get some other construction activity done, and members of the construction community had expressed a similar frustration of trying to deal with Illinois Power in order to get facilities relocated so they could continue with their construction activity. There were, in addition to the, and these are basically what seemed like customer service problems that had to do with systems ineffective Illinois Power for requesting these kinds of services. In addition to that, there was the reliability issues. Some members testified, particularly from the University of Illinois and from the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district, concerning outages and the impact that outages have and the lack of communication during outages and how that impacted their operations. And other industrial users also testified to that. So what can we do about this? In terms of our ability to affect Illinois Power, cities have franchises, have franchise agreement with Illinois Power Company, and that agreement basically covers how Illinois Power operates in our roads, and it doesn't have, really the franchises don't cover what their services to their customers are and don't have customer service requirements in our franchise agreements. As a result of the joint hearing, Illinois Power has come forward and has indicated that they will be taking certain steps, and I think their representatives of the company here, and they will probably tell you exactly what they have been doing and what they plan to do about the problems that were uncovered. And I think the question here tonight is whether that that's the path that we want to go, is we want to discuss these issues with Illinois Power and listen to them, try and work with them, just at that level, to try and address these issues. A second alternative is to file an informal complaint with the Illinois Commerce Commission. Illinois Power is a regulated utility. The Commerce Commission is in charge of overlooking their activities in terms of rates but also in terms of customer service and reliability. We could file a formal complaint. The ICC has a formal complaint process set up, but that complaint process seems to be geared more towards specific customer complaints. You have a problem with your bill, the complaint process will deal with that. These kinds of systemic, broad-based problems do not seem to be geared towards the ICC complaint process as it is. On the other hand, the Energy Division indicates that they would be certainly willing to get involved in a discussion with Illinois Power as to what these problems are and how they could be fixed. I think it comes down tonight to whether we want to just continue to have a discussion as cities with Illinois Power or to proceed to the Illinois Commerce Commission, and I really would recommend that we do proceed informally to the Illinois Commerce Commission for a couple of reasons. Basically, I think the ICC staff has the expertise to identify problems and solutions. I don't think anyone on the city staff would maintain that they have any expertise at all in the power industry, and that is, I think, essential, that someone with some expertise be able to discuss these matters with Illinois Power. There is nothing, I think, in the informal process that would prevent any ongoing discussions with Illinois Power as to what they want to do locally. And a third, I think, the systemic problems that we've identified, I think, may require a more comprehensive solution than basically we can monitor at the city level, and I think these are all good reasons for at least beginning a discussion through the Commerce Commission process. So the power industry's certainly been in the news a lot lately. There's a lot of interesting information available out there, but with this, I think I'll close my comments and respond to any questions.
Questions? Ms. Shanawet?
I had a couple of questions. One is, it sounds as though Champaign has not yet filed a complaint with ICC.
No, we have not. We're going to have a discussion with our council tomorrow night.
Okay. And second, has there been, is there precedent for the cities to sit down with Illinois Power to discuss these issues?
Just the cities themselves and Illinois Power? We, I don't think we've had any formal discussion of that nature, not within my tenure.
Well, certainly on other issues, the tree trimming issue, we've had, all the state legislators and city representatives and IP representatives, so, you know, we certainly have had dialogue with Illinois Power on other issues, but not, you know, utility reliability and customer service issues.
Just another question that was unclear from the information presented to councils, exactly what an informal complaint to the ICC means and what the consequences of such a complaint may be, and just in terms of, and also in terms of consequences both for Illinois Power and for city, city staff time, et cetera, kind of intensity of the interaction.
There's various, the informal complaint process is basically, we could bring our complaints to the head of the Energy Division of the Illinois Commerce Commission. He's, I've talked with him personally, he's indicated he would then call Illinois Power in, lay out some of the problems, and then request Illinois Power to respond with some program, which they then could review based on their expertise in the power industry. The Illinois Commerce Commission has the legal authority to take a much more strong step and to order an audit and a management audit of the company. And the Commerce Commission has done this on a couple of occasions. They did this with SBC when there were major problems with the telephone system in the Chicago area a couple of years ago, and they did this with Con Ed in 1999 when there were some serious power outages up there. And I think the reason we didn't jump to that recommendation is that it tends to be a fairly lengthy and drawn-out process. And if the Illinois Commerce Commission was to look at ordering a management audit, they would have to, typically, they go out and hire a outside consultant. The consultant does a study, you bring back the study, you have meetings and formal proceedings in front of the Commerce Commission, and that certainly is an option if things don't get better or they get worse, but at this point, it seems like it might drag things out more than it would solve the immediate problems.
So just to clarify, the ICC would not request a management audit from an informal complaint?
No.
That would be through the formal complaint process? So the consequences of an informal complaint would be that the ICC would gather, would gather up the information and the problems that our community faces with power reliability and service problems, and then would ask for Illinois Power to give a program? Now, how would the program that they would receive, how would that be different than the program that they've presented to council members?
And I think basically, one aspect of that is the ICC has the expertise to evaluate whether that program is going to answer our problems. For instance, I was reading a newspaper article that indicated Illinois Power's expenditure for, capital expenditures on its system have declined from over $300 million in 1998, I think it is, to about $115 million last year. Is this a source of our reliability problems? Are they not spending enough money on maintenance? This is not anything that staff, and certainly your lawyer sitting here, has any idea of being able to evaluate, and that's something that needs an expert look.
Yeah, I certainly, in reviewing the comments that were made at the forum, and as a business experiencing reliability problems, a technology business that's experienced reliability problems, I can guess what other businesses have gone through. Certainly, this is a major concern for our community, and I'm certainly glad that we're taking action on it and moving forward and really setting a serious message to Illinois Power about what it means to particularly our business community but also our residential community to not have just fundamental basics in terms of reliability and customer service. So certainly support, you know, getting the information we need, going to the ICC and having them be able to evaluate programs to see if they're adequate in dealing with this problem.
Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that you and the rest of staff have done on this, certainly in response, there was quite an outpouring at the June 25th hearing that we witnessed, and I'm optimistic about, from the response of Mr. Hill and from the memo that perhaps things have changed. I'm just curious, I know that when we talked about the water franchise, there was some discussion or question about whether the cities could start to provide their own water, and I'm wondering if that's something with electricity and if that's something that the city, if things don't get better with Illinois Power, if the cities could start their own power generations, I think the university has some of its own power generation, and just out of curiosity, if that's something that you know cities can do, if any of them do do in Illinois, or anything like that?
Some municipalities do in fact operate their own power company. Springfield Power and Light, I think, is probably the biggest one in the state. Grantul has its own, doesn't have outside power company coming in, it operates its own power system. Having the distribution system locally doesn't necessarily mean you're generating power, and the two things can be separated. So power generation, which may require, you know, an operating plant and a certain kind of set of skills and capital and that kind of thing, is not necessarily the same as a municipality operating the distribution system of an electrical, of the electrical system. However, there aren't a whole lot of municipalities that have started into the electrical business. It tends to be something that they've been in since the early part of the 20th century. There is some activity of municipalities condemning an electrical system and then operating it themselves. It is not unknown, it's kind of like the water situation, but the numbers are pretty much reversed in terms of public privacy.
Thank you.
Let me just add, you know, that's certainly a possibility, but it would be a major undertaking. And, you know, even though we have the ability to, as Trish says, to condemn the distribution system, then we would have to bring, immediately bring in the expertise to be able to operate that system and show that we could reliably operate the system so that our performance would be better than that that we're getting from Illinois Power. So it would not be a trivial undertaking by any means, but it's certainly an option if all else fails, yes.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Crowley?
We do have representatives from Illinois Power here, and I'll come up, whoever's going to make a presentation, introduce the rest of your team, and then you can have the floor.
My name is Sean Shucker. I'm the senior vice president of operations for Illinois Power. I'm responsible for the engineering, purchasing, and field operation across the state of Illinois. Tonight I have with me Barb Beck, who's sitting back in the room, who manages the business in the regional, in the central region, and I have Don Waddell next to me, who is one of our technical persons responsible for central operations also. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss with you our response to the issues that were raised in the June public hearing, and let me assure you, are committed to moving forward with improvements in the areas that were identified. We heard a lot of things during that, during the hearing, and they included, one was availability of our personnel, how do you get in touch with them, how do you go about getting service? Second was, your policies and practices aren't efficient for us from the installation, the result in slow project development, lack of communication with your policies, you aren't letting us know what's going on, and then some issues around reliability and specifically to the high-tech firms that we have in the area. We are taking steps, as has been indicated by Mr. Hill earlier and others, that we are working to improve on the situation. We have a number of changes that are in progress currently. Frankly, we were cognizant of some of the issues, and we're going through some of the changes prior to the hearing. The hearing highlighted those issues, and it caused us to move faster as we move forward resolving those issues. I do want to reiterate that we do have a commitment to customer service. We have a commitment to the community. We talked a little bit first about, addressed reliability. Illinois Power focuses on reliability across the state, which includes the Urbana territory. We work with our planning personnel, our investments, to ensure that we're putting the investment where it provides the best reliability for the company. One of the things that we have is a review each year by the Illinois Commerce Commission on Illinois Power's reliability and what they look for in that reliability review. It's the performance of our circuits. They do reviews, and they go out and walk and look at our equipment to see the condition of our equipment. They look over where we're making expenditures on our system to ensure that we are putting the money towards reliability, and then they also review the impact to the customers, our average outage duration and average outage frequency. And then each year, they respond to that and give indication to us of whether we need to make improvements. We make commitments to them about where we're going to be spending our dollars and how we're going to improve on our reliability, and so we work with the ICC each year on the reliability issues. The recommendation to go for an informal complaint is one that we respect, that cities have the right to do. However, we would recommend that a better option moving forward would be for us to continue to work together, hand in hand, and I'll outline some of the things that we've done to address the issue, but to maintain your right to go to the ICC for the informal complaint in the future if things aren't progressing the way that we would all expect them to progress. Some of the things that we have already done, we've reestablished our communication channels with developers in the area, we've given them the names. with developers in the area, we've given them the names of the contacts, and we've made contacts with those customers out there who raised issues at the hearings previously. We've adjusted our process for service requests such that we're more flexible in addressing issues that come up on a shorter timeframe. We've increased our focus in the territory. Barb is new to the role, and we've increased a management focus on this area from a customer service and reliability perspective. We're also working with the Home Builder Association on options for not only Illinois Power installing infrastructure, but such that they would have options to go to others to install infrastructure and give them more flexibility there. We're also working to form a Service Advisory Council so we can deal with issues in the area, whether it's related to reliability, service, or whatever, and work together with members of the community to come up with solutions. We ask that you would work with us as we move forward and such that we can continue to make improvements in the area. The aim of the work is to get the service and reliability that is expected by our customers. Our pledge to you is that we will continue to improve. You've seen some improvement as we move forward. As with most things, it don't change overnight, but I think that you can see that we have made changes that are affecting the folks who are in the community, and we will continue to work with you in that area, and would suggest that we would give periodic updates of the progress that we're making with the folks in the community as we move forward. Thank you.
If you have any questions for the gentleman from Illinois Power, Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I appreciate the report that you provided, Council, August 2003 report, and the response you've made since the outpouring of complaints at the June 25 hearing. But just got a couple of questions on the Service Advisory Council. If I understand correctly, it has not yet begun to meet, and so I'm curious, first, if the meetings will be open to the public, second, will members of the public be able to speak, similar to a public meeting that we're having tonight, and third, will the meetings be publicized, and if so, when is the first meeting or next meeting of the Service Advisory Council?
Since Don's the one who's in the middle of developing this, I'll let Don respond.
Thank you.
The Service Advisory Council is just getting started. They have not had their first meeting yet. The possible participants on that council are being asked. As you've read in the report, Senator Stan Weaver has agreed to chair it. As for it being open, as far as Illinois Power Company is concerned, that's fine with us. And as soon as the meeting gets scheduled, we'll certainly communicate that, and I would expect Senator Weaver would want to, you know, to handle that communication.
And the other question, will members of the public be able to speak, such that someone who isn't appointed or invited to be on the actual council but has concerns or comments they'd like to address, would they be able to bring those up at that meeting?
We would encourage that.
Okay.
Feedback's very important to us. That's how we learn to get better, and so this isn't by any means a closed session. We would entertain feedback when we'd want it.
Thank you.
Ms. Channell with?
I also thank you for a speedy response. One of the things that I see in looking over the documentation in detail is that it really doesn't have measurables in it. So certainly, conversations are important, certainly saying we need to have, we're going to put more management in place. In fact, the most promising thing I see is that, and it may have not happened, it seems like it happened before the hearing, was that you centralized management realized that didn't work and then decentralized it and brought people back into the community so there'd be more accountability. But the piece that I really think is missing in this, and that as a council member, I would want to see to be given the assurances that Illinois Power will really take measurable steps in improving service and customer service and reliability issues, is measurables, like we will increase number of staff, we will invest X number of additional dollars above and beyond what we said in our annual budget, we will change our reliability rates, which have been X for the last year, to this, and we will give ourselves six months, a year, 18 months to do that. We will decrease the length of outages from this to this, et cetera. So if we knew what targets, then it would feel much more like there were tangibles here. I think people came to the hearing with a set of tangibles, you know, this is what happened, my power was out, and these were the consequences, these were the dollars that I lost as a result of this power being out, these are the dollars I lost by not being able to get people into homes that we had promised them to be able to get into. We certainly have a major development which was stalled, our east campus commercial development stalled in negotiations with Illinois Power. We want to know that you're going to have service guarantees, have certain amount of time, turnaround time to respond, et cetera. And I guess I just don't see that kind of information in the materials that you gave us. Is that something that's going to be forthcoming? Will that come out of the Advisory Council? Or at what point will council members see measurables that you're really setting for yourselves, that are different than your current measurables?
I think there's two parts to that. One is around the reliability and how we measure reliability in the areas, and we try to be consistent with what we need to report to the Illinois Commerce Commission, because they have a high focus on reliability. As you can well imagine, with everything that's happened in the industry in the last couple of months, that there's a heightened awareness around reliability. And so, we try to be consistent around where our focus is from a, how well do we respond to our customers? How often do customers on average get interrupted, and how long does it take us to respond back to those customers? And that's the focus of how well we deploy our resources, as well as having the right resources in the area. I think the second issue is around service and how well we respond to service across the map. And that's kind of one where you can put a measure out there, and folks may not like the measure that you put there. And so if you put a measure that the folks who would be on the Service Council would say, well, that doesn't help us much. And so what it really comes down to is, we want to provide the service that they desire and to improve on that. Now, there's things around that we already look at internally, like how quickly do we respond, do we meet customer dates, and things like that that we're pushing ourselves to improve on. But ultimately, it comes down to what is it that customer expectations are, and how do we meet those? And so I think we'll have to work with the Service Advisory Council to come up with, how do we improve, and where do you want us to focus our efforts on?
So just to follow up, are you saying that there will be measurables that you put forward in terms of reliability, whereas, let's say, customer service measurables aren't as important as kind of being able to understand what customer needs are? I guess I didn't hear you necessarily respond to my question, which is, and maybe it was because it was too long, the short question is, will the Service Advisory Council, or will Illinois Power in the near future come up with measurable changes that you will tell the governmental bodies in the area that you are going to meet within a certain timeframe, or is that not on the horizon for you?
Okay, that's somewhat difficult, because we want to make sure that what we respond to is what the customers want. And so I think what comes out of that Service Advisory Council will help us to define what we need to do to improve. I think you've already seen that we're making improvements in the area, and we're going to continue to do that. But what the right metric is, I don't know. Either that will come, or what you will get is either you'll get a metric, or you will get the customers being satisfied with the service that we're providing. And each year, we do a customer service check that is done through the ICC also, to look at the customer satisfaction for each of our communities.
Well, that makes sense in terms of customer service, but in terms of reliability, you already know what customers want. They want reliable power, they want as few outages, as short outages as possible. You can measure those outages, so I guess I don't understand why you wouldn't put forth, I mean, if you're asking for us to not bring a complaint before the ICC, what would keep me as a council member from bringing a complaint before the ICC is saying, you know what, we're going to hit these measurables, and these are the deadlines we have for ourselves, and we're committed to it, and you can track our progress. Right now, I hear we're going to have a lot of conversations, and we're going to try to better understand this. And that's important, especially, I think, when it comes to customer service and understanding what customers need, and maybe Illinois Power hasn't had its thumb on the pulse of what customers need locally. But I think on reliability issues, you don't really need to have conversations. It's much more about, you know, improving your own infrastructure and improving, you know, improving management and setting goals for yourself and meeting those goals. So I guess I don't understand why measurables would not be something that you would want to put forward.
Okay, I probably didn't respond to that question, but we have measurements around the system average interruption frequency and the average durations associated with, across our state, and that's what we look for, to say, are we improving, are we not improving, and we look for continuous improvement on that. And so we have those kind of goals out there, and that's the kind of thing that we talk to the ICC about every year, associated with reliability. And then we also look at things like our worst performing circuits, to say, are you making the changes and investing in those to improve on those areas? So I think that we already measure those, and show, and we have a measure to say, are we improving, and we look at those.
Did you meet your goals this last year?
In 2002.
I don't know what your fiscal year is, so...
2002 would have been the year, and yes, we met the goal, and then we have set a goal to improve that for this year. Obviously, storms have impacted that significantly.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hayes?
It seems that if somebody does something to you, and then they apologize, then there's nothing else you can do about it. They apologize. And as I look at this report, it seems like you're going to revamp the whole system to try to satisfy the needs of the customers, which is a good idea. But there's some things that are going on that's not being explained to the public, or maybe you don't want to explain it to the public. And the first one is, from what I understand, a lot of those power outages have to do with the squirrels. And so, the community is environmentally conscious, and don't want you to kill the squirrels or deal with the squirrels. So if you can't deal with squirrels, then how are you going to cut back on some of these power outages?
Got a question, Mr. Hayes?
Yeah, if you can't do anything with the squirrels, and they don't keep being part of the power outage situation, then how is that going to change?
Yeah, first off, animal protection is one of the things that we look at in improving reliability, and there are industry-wide techniques for doing so. Many of those techniques are employed here in the community, and when we see the need to employ those techniques on circuits, we do so. So that's part of our reliability program. Different ways of conductoring our lines, different ways of protecting animal wildlife from getting too energized conductors and materials, we employ those.
Only at certain times, you don't employ it all the time.
Well, actually, what we do is we place the material in place, and it's there for, you know, for the life of the system. Sometimes, when we patrol a line, we'll find some animal guarding material that has blown off, for instance, and we'll replace it. We'll find locations where it's needed, and we'll put new material up, animal guarding material. It's on lines, it's on substations, it's on various components. We also have designs that account for animals and try to reduce the chances of animals getting into energized components. Once again, these are techniques that are used industry-wide and are employed by Illinois Power right here in this community.
My second question is, had a power outage in New York a couple weeks ago, and...
A squirrel that did that?
No, no, it wasn't a squirrel. Anyway, but it was amazing how the power outages did not affect Wall Street. So, I guess they have redundant power built in, so in case they had a power outage, it's going to continue. In this particular situation, we have a situation where high-tech wants you to supply the redundant power, but you're not going to supply it because ICC says you don't have to. And if they want it, then they're going to have to pay for it. So if high-tech needs this redundant power, then as they build their businesses and whatnot, why don't they put, you know, the redundant power in? And since your budget and whatnot is all the way out to 2006, that means that they won't get any redundant power, or will they?
I think most, if not all, of the high-tech firms, really high-tech, who are requiring, you know, the 99.99% reliability, do put in backup, whether it's backup generation or other sources to protect them against any kind of blips that they have on the system. And so that's quite common across the industry, and you also see that in places where safety is of concern in that. And so, that is not an uncommon thing for the high-tech or financial institutions in that, to have that backup source to supply that additional reliability to their system.
So what was the big squabble about AMDOX a couple months ago?
As far...
Losing power and saying it costs them money every time the power goes out.
Yes, the AMDOX situation started several years ago, when one of the substations that feeds, that fed AMDOX, had some technical problems that caused a lengthy outage. By the way, that particular substation, as well as others, have afforded a lot of animal protection, animal guarding, to guard it from the wildlife that would cause an outage. But that happened several years ago. There were other circuit problems that occurred, some of which were storm-related, some of which were animal-related. And last fall, a decision was made to put in a second feed to that area. And that equipment was procured and installed in January of this year to provide that facility, the AMDOX facility, a second feed. The way that device works is, it senses the voltage on the primary feed, and if that voltage is no longer there, there's a timer on it, I believe it's set for five seconds, and if the primary voltage doesn't return, a switch transfers it to the second feed that was installed. And then the reverse occurs when the primary voltage returns. To my knowledge, that switch is not actuated since it was installed in January, which would indicate that any blips that were on the system were short-lived, to the point where it didn't exceed the five-second timer. That was a project that Illinois Power Company was promised to be paid for and reimbursed by those customers benefiting from it. And so that's the summary of that.
So all of the new high-tech companies, is it going to be recommended that they put in redundant power, or they automatically know that they should put in redundant power?
In that particular case, sir, it's our understanding they have backup power as well. So they were, they considered their backup power needs... So they were, they considered their backup power needs themselves. And as Sean has said, you know, hospitals, we have lots of places that have thought about what their power energy requirements are and have put their own backup generation and power quality equipment in to serve their needs in the event the electric distribution system, you know, had some kind of interruption.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have... One of the things that we're being asked to consider tonight is the resolution with the informal complaint to the ICC. And you recommend that we do not take that action tonight. In your minds, what are the downsides of doing that? I mean, as Ms. Crowley was talking about, it seems like, you know, we can go through the process of dialogue and working directly with Illinois Power through the municipal level and through local businesses and the Home Builders Association and so forth to try to effectuate some change and establish some of the standards that Ms. Chenoweth was referring to. On the other hand, it may formalize that process to put it in the hands of the ICC so that we do get some of the people that have the highest level of expertise in the state, unlike the expertise that we have here locally, to be able to tell if these are going to be effective measures that you're undertaking, if the standards that you're going to be adopting, should you choose to adopt new reliability or customer response standards, if those are in line with the rest of the industry throughout the state and throughout the country. So I know you encouraged us not to pass this resolution, but you didn't really articulate why you're recommending that we don't pass this resolution tonight.
I think the resolution to go to the ICC creates additional activities for us and I don't think provides much additional benefit to you. The ICC is already looking at reliability. The ICC is already looking at customer satisfaction. And so they're looking at those types of things every year. And as I indicated, they have reports on that that we go through each year to them to make them aware of what we're doing. If the issue was that you want to make sure the ICC is aware of it, we think that can be handled through having somebody like the head of the Energy Division facilitate some of the activities at the Service Advisory Council to make sure they're aware when they go through their review. But they already go through a review where we give them extensive data every year. And if an informal complaint gets filed, we will give them a lot of information. And it's basically a lot of the same kind of information we already give them. And so I don't see that there's a lot of additional things that come out of that except for extra effort, where we could spend that effort working with our communities to hopefully improve as we move forward.
Well, it's your opinion that this would be a lot of additional work that would be, that wouldn't yield a lot of benefit. Is that right? I'm not quite understanding why, but...
Well, I think that we've already shown that we're making steps forward. And so the benefits that you're wanting are moving forward. The ICC already has a look at our reliability and a look at our customer satisfaction. And so that's information they already look at. And so beyond that moving forward and the types of steps that we can work together for, I don't know what going to the ICC will get us.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions and comments or comments from the gentleman from IP? All right.
I have a couple. And I don't mean to be mean to you guys because I know that a lot of decisions probably get made down in Texas and you guys are sent out to take the arrows and try to make the best of them. But I remember when Dianergy bought out Illinois Power and there were a lot of promises made about how this is going to yield a more efficient, more responsive power company and it'll be lower rates and better service. And that didn't happen. And it wasn't something that just sort of happened as an isolated instance. All over the country, companies like Dianergy and companies like Enron were lobbying for deregulation, for being allowed to engage in these mergers. And they were making these promises about how much more efficient this was going to be and it's going to be a win-win situation all the way around. And that didn't end up happening. The first real meltdown came in California where Enron and Dianergy and other national companies engaged in criminal actions and held up the taxpayers of California for tens of billions of dollars. California wasn't a little town of 30,000. It's the 11th largest economy in the world. And the power companies still managed to engage in price fixing and other criminal actions. And the political system in California is still in turmoil as a result of those criminal We, on a local level, have, you know, been seeing our own impacts from that. Money that should be invested because it's paid by the ratepayers in replacing equipment and maintenance instead is going to pay off the bonds money that was borrowed to buy out Illinois Power. If Illinois Power hadn't been bought out, it would be invested in upgrading and improving service. The first manifestation that we've seen locally was our trees being cut way back, much more than they had been in the past, in an effort to try to save money on vegetation maintenance to the point that people's trees were really being butchered and harmed. And so we came and worked on that. And it seems like we've, for the most part, resolved that. And now we have these reliability concerns and problems. And, you know, I'm not familiar with your overall statistics that show that there's an improvement going on, but I can tell you, in Ward 7 in southeast Urbana, power outages are a regular occurrence, not from thunderstorms. I come home just about every week in the middle of the day, clear, sunshiny day, and I find my digital clocks blinking and I have two of them. And it's, I mean, a power outage is something that for a residential customer, you know, you expect it three or four times a year. Sometimes equipment has to be replaced or something else has to happen and you don't get upset. But when it happens week after week after week, the whole summer long, you really sort of start to get irritated by it. Because you know that's not the normal course and pattern of things. It wasn't the normal course and pattern of things 20 years ago before these changes started happening. And, you know, the money that ratepayers pay is supposed to go to providing good service and maintaining and providing good equipment. And I'm glad that you guys are making some of the changes, that you are in terms of putting together an advisory commission. But it really does need to be followed up by concrete results. Because in my mind, at least, Illinois Power has two strikes. And the last thing that I want to do is to see the city get in the business of running a power system for the reasons that the mayor explained. I don't think we have the expertise and knowledge to do it. But you can acquire expertise and knowledge if you have to. And I guess I really feel like if we get to the point where there's a third strike, that's the point where I'm going to say, you know, Todd and Bruce, we got to sit down with the city of Champaign and maybe with the county and start figuring out what does it involve to just go ahead and run the power system? Because economic development is vitally important to Urbana. The U of I keeps growing. And if we can't develop our economy, the city of Urbana is going to die. And so when I see business people coming to me and the small, high-tech businesses that we're especially trying to attract, provide, you know, good jobs coming and saying, you know, this is just a huge negative in terms of whether or not we want to locate here, it's really a strike at the future viability of Urbana in a way that it probably isn't for Champaign or some of the other towns. We have to have good power and it has to be reliable. And so, you know, I'm not going to give you a laundry list of things that I want to see done or things I want to see happen for the simple reason that I don't want to run a power system. I don't want to see the city have to buy one and we have to run it. And I don't want to run your power system for you. I want it to be as easy as it was 20 years ago, where it was safe, reliable, consistent, and affordable. And I understand that you guys have to deal with the budgets and things that are dictated from Texas. But I can't talk to the Board of Dianergy, I can't talk to the CEO. All we have is you guys. And so that's why you have to put up with it. But I really do hope that we can see some of these things change and move forward because I'm serious as a heart attack. If it continues to go this way and we are just sort of talking about talking, then we're going to start talking about seeing if we can't run it better. So, but I do thank you guys for your time and for coming to meet with us.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Chenoweth?
I don't have a question. I have a motion.
Okay.
I move a resolution authorizing the chief administrative officer to file or join in an informal complaint with the Illinois Commerce Commission concerning Illinois Power Company's customer service and reliability. Second...
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Wyman?
Just quickly, while I appreciate Illinois Power coming and starting to address these concerns that were brought up by so many different developers and business people, I think that their response shows why we should file an informal complaint rather than a formal complaint. And certainly had, if we hadn't had the positive response from Mr. Hill and from others that Illinois Power has started to make some changes, I would have supported a formal complaint. But since they have made these changes, I'm supporting the informal complaint process that is addressed in this resolution and look forward to periodic updates from our staff as well as Illinois Power and from leaders in the economic development community about hopefully positive changes by Illinois Power in addressing these problems. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments, or discussion of the motion? Pat?
It's just a small one. And the third whereas in the resolution, I think there's a typographical error of words being repeated unless I'm misunderstanding it. It says, whereas numerous members of the public, including the residential and industrial development community, the industrial community provided. And I think that second set of words, the industrial community, should be deleted.
Except as a friendly amendment.
Except as a friendly amendment. Thank you. I'd also just like to say, speak in support of the motion. I, you know, as folks have said, to residential customers, an interruption of service for 30 or 60 seconds is an annoyance because one has to reset a digital clock. But for businesses, it's more than an annoyance. And it's not just the highest tech businesses. It really costs them a lot of money. And the cost isn't just money. One of the things that the News Gazette pointed out in its testimony was that when they have a power outage and it shuts down the presses and not only is the newspaper late, but newspaper carriers who are 10 years old have to go out and deliver their newspapers after dark in the winter, which is not part of the News Gazette's delivery plan when everything's working right, but is a consequence of Illinois Power's failure to provide proper service. I was at the hearing on June 25th and I got the impression that they, the folks from Illinois Power, think that if a power outage is only 60 seconds, that that's not really a problem. And again, it might not be a problem in my house, but it is a big problem for businesses that have to shut down and restart their operation. And actually, it's a problem for anyone who's on a computer doing anything important because they lose it. So I hope that we see as a result of action that is indicated in this resolution, a significant change for the benefit of all of the power customers in our community.
The motion or a second are willing to accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, well, next we'll go to item seven on the agenda, discussion regarding ordinance number 2003-06-064, ordinance approving an agreement for promotion and marketing services with the Urbana Business Association, 501(c)(3), act for profit corporation.
I'll take that. I provided in the council pack at the original memo and resolution and the agreement regarding the UBA contract. I did so because I was getting a little nervous about the timing and I understood that with two big events that we needed to get this rolling. Since I put that in the packet, I do understand that, in talking with a couple of council members, that there are some proposed changes and modifications in the works that aren't ready at this point. And I have a suggestion, and I guess we're really not ready to forward this on to city council until those changes are made, which I hope can happen in the very near term once the new directors onboard. But the suggestion that I have is to solve the interim problem is that I will just go ahead and release up to, say, $15,000 of the contract money, which is roughly what would happen in the first quarter anyway, because there's some cash upfront in the first quarter. The reason I think that that's probably appropriate in this case is we did approve the money in the budget. This is the first year that we're actually doing an ordinance authorizing the contract. In the past, we approved the budget and I released it either on a letter of understanding or signature anyway. So it's not too much of a deviation from what we're doing in the past. That would solve the short-term problem in terms of the cash crunch and then also provide council members with opportunity to make those tweaks to the agreement. So with your indulgence, I would proceed in that fashion.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Questions or comments? All right, then we'll go ahead and proceed in that fashion. Item number eight, discussion Five Points East Redevelopment, Birch, Tatman.
As the council members know, we've been working for some time now on the redevelopment of Five Points East and Five Points West, as those are key parcels that are to be developed in the future by all of our plans, including the downtown plan, the Tiff redevelopment plan, and a comprehensive plan as core retail areas in downtown Urbana. In terms of Five Points East, we have been working with Paul Tatman and Jim Birch regarding the development of a portion of that area. You have on your desk tonight a very lengthy redevelopment agreement. I wasn't able to get this to you in advance. It is a draft. Most of this is boilerplate language from our past agreements that we use. And also, the bulk of it includes an actual mortgage and note document that we would use. Also on your desk is a redevelopment map that is a substitute for the larger redevelopment area that was in the packet. The redevelopment area generally that we're talking about here for now is the area of Park Street South, which would be Park on the north, University Avenue on the south, Maple on the east, and Vine Street on the west. That's the general area of redevelopment. The particular parcel that we're talking about right now that the partnership just acquired title to is what is known as the Yen Chain Parcel. The Cliff Notes version of this large packet is this, that we don't have an identified redevelopment project at this time. However, this is an area that we want to move forward in terms of redevelopment. The developers would be obligated to finish... The developers would be obligated to finish up the acquisition of the property and begin environmental remediation and demolition next month, and begin the development process, and then work towards completing acquisition of the redevelopment area generally, as well as marketing site for retail redevelopment. I expect there to be a successor agreement to this in the future, once a redevelopment is identified. What this does right now in terms of the city's role is to provide a loan. The loan is $100,000. It would be up to a period of three years if there's not a successor agreement. It would be returned to the city. It is secured by a redevelopment agreement, a note, and a mortgage. It is, in terms of disclosure, important that you understand that we would be in the second position on the mortgage. There is a first mortgage on the property currently. And that would be our security on the loan, as the mortgage. What I expect to happen, if all goes well, is that these acquisitions would be completed, the area would be cleared, and the redevelopment would be secured, at which time we would come back with a different redevelopment agreement that would specify what it is we're actually going to do over the long term. So I view this as sort of an interim step that allows the developers some flexibility to move forward in clearing the property. I know there's a lot of paper here. This is a draft, but I would say it's a 98% complete draft. So that's where we are. If all goes well and we finish up the remainder of this, we would then ink it on September 2nd. We would advance the funds and demolition and remediation would take place in September. Jim Birch, who is one of the partners in the LLC, is here. He can answer questions if you'd like, or I'd be happy to take a shot at him.
Ms. Wyman.
Just one preliminary question. Do we know yet what would go in, go here?
No.
Okay.
Retail.
Ms. Chenoweth.
Maybe Carl can answer this question, even though it's premature. What's the timeframe that we're looking at in terms of development in this area? We're looking at, what's that?
Oh, in the, in this area? Well, the activity would start immediately in terms of clearance and marketing and all of that. As far as the timeframe, the developers will be highly motivated, given their investment, to try to redevelop the area as soon as they can. But, you know, part of that is based upon the economy and who's interested in the area and those types of things. So this agreement, we have a three-year period to get something going. I'm sure that they want to do it much more quickly than that.
So you're thinking, Bruce, that we might see a redevelopment agreement in the next year?
I would say so. Jim, can you help me out with that?
I don't have a definite timetable, but September 2nd, the asbestos abatement on the Yen Chang restaurant begins. It's about a 10-day job, and immediately when that's done, the demolition begins. And so, it's been two years to get this far, and I'd love to tell you that we're going to start next week. But I have additional property to acquire, and I view the clearing of the corner as the first step to make people aware that that property is available for development. Does that answer anybody's concern? I'm more motivated than anybody else. I'm paying the first mortgage now.
Got it. Thanks, that's all.
I want to do an asset for me. I mean, I really want a nice project. That's a focal corner. It needs a good development on it. Until I tie a lot of loose ends together, I can't tell you a lot of things because I'm still in the acquisition.
Any other questions? Mr. Birch.
Okay. I would just add, in terms of the finances, that this is a Tiff eligible redevelopment project. It is a designated redevelopment area in our Tiff plan, and we did budget in this, most recently approved budget, the funds, to move forward with this. So we will not require a budget amendment, but we will require the agreement.
Any other questions or comments? So you're asking us, what are you asking us to do?
To forward this on for approval at the September 2nd meeting.
Okay. All right. Ms. Chenoweth.
I wanted to forward the redevelopment agreement. There's probably a better, the Five Points East redevelopment agreement. I'm looking to see if there's a particular title to it.
Well, for now, we're calling it Five Points East, but it is an LLC now. What's the official name of the LLC?
Five Points Northeast LLC.
Okay. I, for the Five Points East LLC redevelopment agreement to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Chenoweth.
I just wanted to state my excitement for this project. I think it's, it's an excellent one. It certainly has been needed for a while. That's a prime real estate corner. It's also in the corridor to our downtown. And certainly, I think there's a lot more that could be done on the corner than we see currently. And so, I applaud your efforts in moving forward with the redevelopment at that corner.
Yen Chang is closed now, so we're ready to take our first visible step. But it's been a long time getting here.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Birch, for all the hard work you're putting into this and will be putting into it, and also in other areas around the community.
Yeah, I echo Mr. Hill's. The staff has been very supportive and gone to bat for us on several issues. And there were issues that couldn't be public at this point, so we've had a lot of help from staff.
We appreciate all your efforts to keep the pack growing.
Thanks.
All right. No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2003-08-088, an ordinance designating Brinshaw Development LLC for the redevelopment of 206 and 208 North Ray Street and Tax Increment Finance District numbers one and two. Mr. Kowalski.
Thank you. In your packet tonight, you have a draft ordinance selecting Brinshaw as a development of what's commonly referred to as a Stratford Lot. I think you're pretty well familiar with this proposal that Brinshaw submitted and we've selected. We are preparing a more detailed presentation and discussion for next week, when Peter Levovy from Brinshaw will be able to attend the council meeting and we can give, he can give a lot more detail on their company. We'll talk more about the proposal and timing and et cetera. But just to give you a touch of background, as you know, we solicited a request for proposals back in April. And Brinshaw's proposal, which is for a three-story mixed-use center, 30 market rate residential condominiums, and four retail condominiums, really best fit the goals of the RFP, the goals of the downtown plan, and is really, looks to be quite a nice project. It would be built along with 15 parking spaces. And again, this is at the corner of Race and Water Street. We've been discussing with Brinshaw, negotiating with them, preparing to put together a formal development agreement. We want to take the first step in having council designate them as developer contingent upon a subsequent development agreement that would obviously get into much more detail about the city's obligations, the developers' obligations, a due diligence schedule on when they will perform, what steps, and at what time. And then also more detail on the incentive package and how that's going to be, how that's going to be worked out. So that would come later. We expect, we would have that to you before the end of the year. In the meantime, Brinshaw has identified to us that it's very important for them to have this resolution designating them, so they have some preliminary commitment and can begin expending some of their money on putting together marketing materials, getting a sign-up on the property that shows what's, what's available and who to contact for more information, and also start putting together their plans for review and approval, et cetera. So I'll take any comments or questions, but again, we'll have a little more to discuss next week.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Kowalski? All right, if there's no comments or questions, we entertain a motion.
Move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
A motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have item number 10, motion to allow sanitary sewer connection for 2410 Charlin Drive under the urgency provisions of resolution number 9394-13. Mr. Kowalski.
Not too much to present. It's just a failed septic. They want to hook up, and they've agreed to annex at some point that they are contiguous, which they are not now. This would allow them to connect and we'll be bringing back a formal agreement at a later date.
Move to send it to council for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Birch.
All it takes is a motion, and the committee doesn't need to go to council.
Oh, okay. If there's no objection, then the motion will be amended to say it's a motion to approve this sanitary sewer connection. Okay. No objection. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, now we have ordinance number 2003-08-089, an ordinance approving a final plat South Ridge 5 subdivision, planning case number 1863-S-03. Mr. Kowalski.
Yes, in 2001, you passed an ordinance approving the preliminary plat for South Ridge for 175 lots. There were also three waivers that were granted, including mountable curbs, no connection to Baronry Drive, and street width reductions. Carl Hill is here and can talk more about the final plat, but the final plat would be the first section for South Ridge 5. It would be 51 lots, dedicate the necessary roads. It would also dedicate a 20-foot right-of-way along the north side of the development, which will be a future bike path that will be constructed. The plat has been sent out for review by agencies. We expect that review to be complete before final action next week, but it doesn't look like there's going to be any problems with any of the reviewing agencies. All the provisions for drainage will be met. Utility connection, there's no additional waivers requested, so staff does recommend approval of the final plat.
All right. Are there any questions or comments? Still question or comments? Do we have a motion? Ms. Pat.
I move to send the ordinance to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, I'll just thank Mr. Hill again throughout this process and also all the other things he's doing in the community. He's really bringing a lot to Urbana, and we appreciate it. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll see you next week at City Council. Final item on the agenda is a review of the residential multifamily recycling RFP. Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you. Council received in their packets a document that would request proposals to solicit price information and other information regarding to, regarding the residential multifamily recycling program we have in Urbana. We're requesting a motion to authorize staff to issue this RFP this Thursday. Basically, our current contract expires March 31st next year. This proposal would, will continue that program beyond that time for another five years with a two-year option under mutual agreement. We may have the option to select a single contractor to provide services for both residential and multifamily services, or an individual contractor for each program. We also will be introducing some other features to our program, for instance, 65-gallon wheeled cart for residential customers. And five and six unit dwellings will be moved from our current residential program into our multifamily program. In short, that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
All right. Ms. Wyman.
Yeah, as I expressed to you on Saturday when I saw you, I think there's interest, I think, I think I'm not the only council member who's interested in seeing this expanded to, at some point, commercial recycling. And I realize you've been very busy with the landfill issue and, and obviously the recycling programs as well. But I'm wondering if, if and when the council addresses the commercial recycling issue, again, that this issue is something that could, commercial recycling could be added to such contract, or would it be a separate contract? And then finally, would the commercial, when you anticipate we'll be looking at commercial recycling again as a follow-up to, I think, was it a year or two ago when we, when we last looked at this?
It was last fall. Staff discussed this issue a little earlier today. I believe we could probably come back within 60 days with a recommendation for council regarding commercial recycling. At least that would give council a document. I would envision a proposed ordinance that would involve some mandating of commercial recycling services to be provided by the existing private sector haulers.
Thank you.
All right. Any question or comment? Ms. Chenoweth.
Yeah, one of the things in looking, it's somewhat, it's relevant both to the, to the RFP, but it's actually not relevant to the RFP, it's relevant to our general recycling. It seems as though, although Urbana is doing much better than, I think we're recycling at a rate that's double our neighbor and most of our surrounding neighbors, yeah. We also lag behind the national average by at least seven percentage points, based on an article in the News Gazette, I think, March of this year. And looking at the state of Illinois, we actually lag behind by about 13%. If we look at states like Arkansas, Wisconsin, et cetera, we actually lag behind more like 17 to 20%. And so, I think that we need to look at making steady progress in terms of our recycling program to try to meet at least national averages. I certainly expect that much of Urbana, and if not more. And I know from, from your quote in the paper, that you too feel it's possible for us to approach things on the order of 40, even 50%, if the buy-in, if community buy-in existed. And I believe if we had a commercial recycling program, and I think those are the two components I think that our program lacks currently. It's an excellent program in many ways, and expanding to multifamily was, was very important in terms of getting our numbers up. But I feel like there's, there's some things we could continue to do. And to empower local residents to really take advantage of it, I think that we need to be looking at some kind of educational plan with regards to recycling. Currently, we have a great program. We also have a high turnover of residents in the area, and many of them don't really know that it's there, or they learn about it too late in the process, and so that could be one component. There may be people here who have lived here for a long time, but they're neighbors. There's certain areas in Urbana where I know it's recycling day and I don't see any bins out. And so I think that in some neighborhoods, there's quite a bit of recycling, in other neighborhoods, there's not. Maybe there's a way to reach out to neighborhood organizations, et cetera, and do some educational efforts. So I'd like us to, to look at developing some plans with, with some measurables to say, okay, we're going to meet, you know, at least the national average by this time and kind of make it a goal for ourselves. And then set out, to hear from your office, the kinds of steps that we could take, and the most cost-efficient steps first, obviously, in terms of getting to that, to that place. So certainly, I think the wheeled bins, when I looked through the RFP, I think the wheeled bins were one of the biggest, that and moving some of what is now residential, single-family recycling over to multifamily might, might help. And those are two improvements to the system that I see in the RFP. I agree with both of them. But I do believe if we look at our, at the overall recycling program, there's certainly room for improvement. And I really don't think that we should be sitting on our laurels, particularly given that we really aren't even meeting state and national averages in this community. We really should be... We really should be able to do that here.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Fletcher? If not, then a motion would, well, is this an action item? Or is this just? Ms. Pat.
I move to authorize issuing the request for proposals to provide residential multifamily recycling services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries.